Hey, everybody. Welcome to our meeting tonight. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent or received by the city clerk at least twenty-four hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris. Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. If everyone can please stand, we're gonna have invocation by Jonathan Orozco of Legacy Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by me.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for life. We thank you for the freedoms that we have. We pray that you would give guidance and direction to our city officials, that you would guide their thoughts and give them wisdom as they move our city forward. Thank you for the blessings and for the blessings of our city. We pray that you would turn the hearts of men and keep us safe. Thank you for the first responders and for their families. May you daily protect them and give them strength, both mentally and physically. Lord, may you pour out your Spirit upon the churches of this city, that revival may take place in our hearts. Father, we need your presence in our homes, in our government, in our lives. We thank you so much, Lord, for everything you do for us. Thank you, Jesus, for this city. Amen.
All right, very good. We have one agenda modification, just known for item number eight. Staff has prepared a revised resolution, which will be provided to the council and has been. And copies are available for the public in the lobby if you're interested. That's for item number eight. Right now, we'll begin with item number one. Ceremonial presentation is Downtown Business Association Summer Stroll Presentation. I see them working their way to the hot seat.
All right, hello. Okay, perfect. All right, good evening. This is, um, thank you, Mayor and Council for your time tonight. My name is Sandy Drown with the Yuba City Downtown Business Association, and I'm also here with Teresa Smith, who is also a board member for the Yuba City Downtown Business Association. We're gonna do our presentation tonight for the Summer Stroll Festival. Hopefully, you guys all attended on April, or I'm sorry, on June fifteenth. So this year, for the two thousand and twenty-four Summer Stroll, we profited fourteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-five, which is a big mark for us. This money contrib- or goes back into our events and marketing. So if you guys have seen, um, a few years back, we did the Trees. That was about a ten thousand dollar project for us to spend. And so any money that we make from these strolls, our two signature strolls, um, goes back into, um, what we can do for downtown. So hopefully, you guys are enjoying that. And then we've been able to bring out some other events as well, uh, with that. It gives us additional revenue for marketing our businesses downtown. And then the next thing that, um, I wanted to share with you guys was, if you missed it, this is, oops. We have a video of our Summer Stroll for this year. So that was our two thousand and twenty-four Summer Stroll. So hopefully, everybody got to see that. This is a way where we, um, also can market it to get other people to come. And, um, I'm gonna move it back one second. Um, just an opportunity to really showcase our beautiful city. So, um, we're hoping that the city would actually like to utilize this, uh, video as well. But, um, this is something that we do for our downtown to really grow and kind of let people know, um, outside of our community, as well as in our community, um, the great things that we have, um, for events. So right now, I would like to introduce Teresa Smith, who's gonna go over, Smith, Smith, sorry. We didn't practice that part on our, our presentation. But she's gonna talk about the Kids Zone, because this year, we did a lot of, um, growth there. And so I'll let you go ahead and, uh, discuss that.
Thank you. This year, the weather was in our favor that day. We sectioned off a part of North Plumas, Plumas and Calusa for a complete Kids Zone area, which was visible from Calusa and Plumas. Uh, we even had a few people stop by and say they saw the attractions on the side of the road and stopped and came by. Not only did we have an eighteen-foot dry slide, we had a forty-foot obstacle course and a twenty-five-foot coconut climbing wall to challenge those who dared to take them on. New this year, we had a theme. It was a Hawaiian luau, in case you didn't notice all that stuff going on. Vendors even took part in decorating their booths to get in the spirit. We had the Science Wizard, who had kids screaming with excitement, all while learning a little science on the side. Kids also took part in ukulele lessons with the option to purchase one of their own. This booth was busy the whole event, with kids eagerly learning how to play the ukulele. Everyone left wearing Lays. Uh, Stevie Farms arrived with pony rides for the kids, many choosing their favorite pony to ride on. Joe Moy was there with, with his guitar, entertaining and interacting with the crowd in full Joe Moy fashion. Kids also waited to get their face painted. The two thousand and twenty-four Summer Stroll Festival was the first year we utilized the ability for people to pay with cards for the wristbands and pony rides and ukuleles. That turned out to be beneficial for all. Take that to you, Sandy.
All right. So that was a new enhancement that we did. And so hopefully, um, that was where we were able to, uh, recoup, uh, some of that, uh, marketing opportunity for the revenue that we got. And then the next area that we, that was new was, it's not new, the Beer Gardens is not new, but we actually brought back the cornhole tournament, and that brought in a hundred and sixty, uh, outside, uh, people to come to our event. So besides the fifteen thousand people that showed up that day, we also were able to attract tourists as well. And so we were super excited about that. As you guys were able to watch in the Beer Garden, there was a ton of activity with that. And then it was just great to see families that came to support their families, um, on the cornhole tournament, um, which we partner with a local person here that does professional cornhole tournaments. And then this is, uh, our sponsors for the Summer Stroll. As you can see, we, uh, our new Downtown Coordinator cameo has been, um, aggressively getting new, uh, sponsors for the event. But of course, we wouldn't want to, um, forget thanking the Yuba City for their sponsorship and, um, and how we're able to, to create this great event. So the committee, um, as you see, is very small. But we are, uh, we all work hard to, uh, to take care of what we need to do. These are all comprised of small business owners, there's downtown as well, so. But I did wanna just thank personally Teresa for all of her hard work these last three years that you've been, uh, the event chair, because we know that it does take away from your business, um, and that you do such a great job. All right, and then a big special to, of course, the City of Yuba City, um, for your sponsorship and, um, all the things that you guys do. All right, and then the other people in the city that we wanted to thank, which was first, Public Works. And I'm so glad to see Jack McDaniel's here, because, Jack, we've been at a lot of meetings, and we just wanted to personally thank you and your team, which I believe, I've got Nick, I've got Ty, I've got Gary, and I've got Chuck, that were instrumental in helping us with the street closure day of. I can't tell you how well, um, you guys worked together, but also worked with us, um, throwing down an event. So the pressure was on. We had a lot of, um, fun things that happened, but we also had, um, we did a great job, um, working hard. So I just wanna thank Public Works especially for all that. And Ben for allowing your team to, uh, help coordinate with the special events permit on that. Also, the other departments that we wanted to highlight was the Police Department, Sergeant Williams. I know he's not here, but, uh, he's been our new traffic, uh, officer for the last couple of years, and he's done a really great job. Actually, not a couple of years, like, this is our second event that we've done with him. We were also to, able to make this event an open container event. And so, uh, we wanna thank Sergeant Williams and his team for, um, all of their help. We'd also like to thank Parks and Rec, Ann, for, um, not only did you just help with, uh, bringing a great active booth, but you actually helped in the Kids Zone. So all that passion that Teresa was sharing was, um, it was great, because you guys helped collaborate with that. So hopefully, your team enjoyed that. And then, uh, last, but not, um, last, but this is, uh, we always start with, uh, special events permit with the Fire Chief. And so his team, Kaylee Bartlett, uh, was fascinating, or was awesome with working with our food vendors and making sure that we were safe and, um, that we were able to not send anybody away. So we had over a hundred and, uh, thirty vendors that showed up. And, uh, out of that, we had twenty-five food vendors. So we appreciate the Fire Department making sure that everybody was pre-approved prior to showing up to the event. They made the experience great. And I think with that, that's all we have. Um, I'd just like to thank again the Mayor and the Council for allowing us this opportunity to present.
Thank you very much, Sandy and Teresa. Now, we get to have, uh, we'll move on to number two. Proclamation recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. If we can have Ann and crew down front. I don't know if we're all gonna fit down there or not, but we'll certainly try. We've done it before.
We should probably, should we stay in the background again?
All right, what a crew, good. So July is Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation are vitally important to promoting and maintaining the quality of life in our community and contributing to the economic, aesthetic, and environmental well-being of the region. Parks and Recreation provide positive alternatives for children and youth to reduce crime and mischief, while promoting the arts, increasing social connections, aiding in therapy and promoting lifelong learning. Through the hard work and dedication of our Parks Maintenance Staff, our parks provide access to nature and the outdoors, giving our youngest citizens a place to run and play. Residents of all ages, businesses, community organizations, and visitors alike benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, facilities, and recreation programs, including Blackburn Tally Sports Complex, Gaoche Aquatic Park, Feather River Parkway, San Brandon's Pickleball Tennis and Bocce Courts, the Senior Center, and youth and adult sports provided by the City of Yuba City Recreation Department. They're very busy. The City Council urges all its residents to recognize that Parks and Recreation enriches the lives of residents and visitors, builds healthy, active communities by aiding in the prevention of chronic disease, such as obesity, improves the mental and emotional health of all citizens, as well as adding value to the community's homes and neighborhoods. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council of the City of Yuba City, do hereby proclaim July two thousand and twenty-four as Parks and Recreation Month. And in doing so, encourage the citizens of Yuba City to visit and enjoy our parks, trails, open spaces, facilities, and recreation opportunities. You guys work so hard. Thank you very much for all you do. Very much. Always good to do that. Oh, three and four for the minute, okay. Thank you. All right, now we can move on to number three, Appearance of Interest in Citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on the other items within the scope of the city's jurisdictions, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to s- select representatives to express the opinions of the group. I know I have one speaker card from Liz Cervantes. If, uh, come on up, Liz, and then if anybody else would like to speak, just, um, I'll ask for that when she's done.
Hello, Liz Cervantes, District Five, Sutter County. Been over a year since I've been in your chambers, but you have some points of interest for me tonight. First of all, thank you for having the midi- meeting at six P M. Honestly, it was still hard for me to get here, but at three P M, which the supervisors do, these guys. And I know that tonight, you're gonna be considering a tax revenue and that you wanna give these clowns at least five million dollars. They don't know what they're doing. I am begging you to reconsider your tax measure. This is a horrible time, a horrible climate. Our dollar is just about ready to collapse. Might not affect you five, but it affects all of us out here. And quite frankly, I'm tired of taxes. Can we be more creative? Can we maybe privatize? Is there anything other than spending other people's money? Because we're tapped out. And I'm telling you, their measure failed. And even though Mark laid down a wager for me last night, which I'm trying to figure out what I can bet him that your tax is gonna fail, your tax is gonna fail. And I don't mean to sound like Joe Biden whispering. Okay, but look, I'm just gonna tell you a personal story really quick that happened to me, why, why I'm a little bit late today. Got a phone call from my, uh, insurance provider, who told me that they were going to not renew my homeowner's policy. Had it for fifteen years, never turned in a single claim. They said that they had flown a drone over our property the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three. And I said, well, this is BS. I said, they couldn't even find a sniper on the roof trying to take out a president, but they can see mildew on my roof. Really? This is what the common person is facing. Okay, it's real, it's hard. We're making more money than we ever have, and we're just throwing it back out there. For what? Before you ask for a tax, let's see some return on the taxes we have already paid. I'll be back for item number nine.
Any other member of the public would just comment. Uh, Stephanie, I have you down on, uh, number nine. Did you wanna make a general comment also right now? Okay, go ahead. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
And just to clarification, if we have an agenda item, please don't talk about the agenda item for this one. This is more of an opportunity for general public comment as to other items and not on the agenda. So if you have an agenda item comment, please reserve your comment for that time. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Of the three minutes, and giving another minute to that here, okay. I did mention on my thing, I was gonna talk about potholes and all the other things. When, when you come out of surgery and you're driving over the roads, you get the magic fingers without having to put in a quarter. And it can hurt. Now, um, free massages is one thing, but when you don't want them, that's another. There are ways other than, there are less expensive ways to fill potholes. And I won't talk about the tax, that's hard to do. I'll wait for number nine. But how much value are we getting out of our government? You call the police, oh, no, that's a civil matter. We can't answer that. And I know it's New Salini sending down ridiculous rules where criminals rule, illegals get even more benefits, and we pay them. I mean, are you kidding me? You go in for healthcare, and even at the VA, we have illegals there. You go over here, and it's so overcrowded, overdone, and you have Big Brother in there. So what is our government doing? What is our local people doing to help us out, the regular citizens? Absolutely nothing. I've seen people get thrown out of their apartments. Why? So that they can raise the rents and rent it to the government for illegals. And this has been going on since Obama. They get away with substandard everything, and there's no consequences. I mean, I was raised that if you did anything, there was a consequence. In school, we had six-eyed nuns that you could even get away, well, nobody's got away with anything. But, um, although it could be possible. But this climate now, who feels safe? I don't. Millions of people coming up here. I've seen people walking around with guns. I've got a CCW, and I'm like, making sure I don't, uh, you can't see it when I do, but. Yeah, before, when I had my ostomy, I could just put it underneath there, and nobody could tell the difference. But anyway, I guess what I'm saying is, I do not feel safe. When you go in over the roads, especially after fresh surgery, you just bounce so much, it causes extra pain. And I'm not the only one. I mean, jeez, put Play-Doh in the things, for Pete's sakes. We, we let all these trucks go by, and we see everything tearing down. You see traffic, unbelievable. Why? Because we don't have the infrastructure. Why don't we? Because your predecessors approved everything without, uh, requiring that. And who pays for it? The suffering citizens? And where does our tax money go? Do we have any? What do we have? If you can't even call, you know, oh, I've got a squatter, and they just came here. Oh, no, that's a civil. You get robbed again, oh, there's nothing we can do, whatever, go online. They don't do anything. Although I did get a gun back that was stolen back in two thousand, which was absolutely surprising. But, I'll shut up.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on Consent Calendar Items Four and Five? Seeing none, we'll move back to the council for some action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move that we approve the consent calendar, including Items Four and Five?
Second.
Uh, first and second, to approve Consent Calendar Items Four and Five, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously, move on to business items. We have number six.
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
I need to recuse myself from number six due to a property challenge.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a minute. Number six is Richland Waterline Extension Project, the Contract Award, presented by Ben Moody.
Almost. Good evening, uh, Mayor and members of City Council. My name's Nick Menezes. I'm an associate civil engineer with the city's Public Works Department. And tonight, I'll be discussing the Richland Waterline Extension Project Contract Award. So this slide here shows, uh, generally, uh, general location of the project limits. Generally, um, Richland Road to Camino Cortez, uh, will be installing a water main, as, as well as a portion of Little John, Camino Cortez, and some work in Cortez Court. So I'll start with, uh, some background on this particular project. Uh, the city's Maintenance and Engineering Divisions maintain a priority list of water mains requiring major maintenance or full replacement. That list is prioritized by age, frequency of maintenance callouts. So how often the maintenance team goes out to repair these projects, uh, to repair these, these water mains? Access, are these water mains in back lar- back lots, or are they, um, fronting, um, the properties on a road? This is a picture here of, uh, of Richland residents where the back lot, uh, the water mains running through the back lot here. And you can see a tree and a shed right over the top, making it very difficult for maintenance crews to go in there and maintain and, and repair this line as required. Pipeline material, um, and water master plan risk ratings. So the water master plan assigns a numerical value from one to five, one being low risk, five being high risk, to all the water mains in the city. The metrics for those values include the, the items I've just listed above, but also likelihood of failure and consequence of failure, and fire flow capacity deficiencies. All the water mains in the Richland vicinity are high priority based on the high-risk ratings and metrics I've just listed above. So in order to address the issues in the previous slide, this project proposes, uh, to extend a ten-inch water main approximately nine hundred feet on Richland Road, extend a six-inch water main, nine hundred forty-two feet, approximately on Little John, um, and install five hundred sixty feet of six-inch water main, Camino Cortez and Cortez Court. By doing so, we'll be able to abandon this segment here, where all these people fronting Richland and Camino Cortez are connected. We'll be able to reconnect those services to the new water mains fronting those properties on Richland Road and Camino Cortez. We'll provide new service stubs for the individuals for the properties on Richland, the south side of Richland here, for future potential connections. And then we'll also install new hydrants on Little John, Richland Road, and Camino Cortez. So upon council authorization to bid this project, the project was advertised for bids from May sixteenth through June tenth of this year. The city received nine bids, which is, which is a really good number. The bid tabulations below, uh, we have Newland entities with their low bid at nine hundred ninety thousand, all the way to J P B Designs' high of two point four million. all the way to JPB Designs' high of two point four million. The engineer's estimate is nestled somewhere here in the middle at one point four one eight million. Within five days of bid opening, Newland Entities, the low bid, notified the city requesting to be relieved of its bid. Public contract code section fifty-one oh three permits a bidder to withdraw their bid. But they need to demonstrate and provide the following. Their mistake indeed was made, that the bidder gave notice within five days, that the mistake made the bid materially different than what the bidder intended, and that the error in the bid was clerical inadvertent and not due to an error in judgment. Staff and the city attorney reviewed the request. The request included an explanation and documentation characterizing the error as inadvertent and clerical in nature. So therefore, staff believes that Newland Entities demonstrated a good faith effort to comply with section fifty-one oh three and therefore recommends a Newland Entities bid withdrawal request be granted. Assuming the bid withdrawal request is accepted, the city has two options. We can reject all bids and rebid the project, or award to the next low bidder. Staff recommends awarding to the next low bidder for the following reasons listed here. Rebidding the project may result in higher bids due to bid numbers entering the public record, material price increases due to inflationary pressures, and ongoing supply chain disruptions. Rebidding the project may also jeopardize favorable construction conditions as we enter the fall and winter, delaying the project and potentially risking further deterioration of the water mains in the area. Lastly, delays may risk, additionally, delays may risk obtaining few bidders as a result of other competing projects. Additionally, the next low bid is under the engineer's estimate, the next low bidder is responsible and responsive. Newland Entities complied with section fifty-one oh three, and we can avoid potential legal issues by awarding to the next low bidder. Given that the bid withdrawal request is approved and the second low bidder is awarded, below are the estimated construction costs. So the construction contract will be at one point three, contingency fifteen percent at approximately one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. City will provide CM and inspection on the project at about, estimate about nineteen thousand dollars for a total of one point five three million. Staff would like to maintain that fifteen percent contingency. The project, most of the project will take place in people's front yards and backyards and reconnecting to their homes. And so that presents an opportunity for unforeseen conditions, which we want to stay ahead of. Funding for this project will come from two water fund accounts, CFP account ten ninety-two and CIP account ten ninety-three. Out of ten ninety-two, requesting seven hundred, approximately seven hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred thirty out of ten ninety-three for a total of one point five three. With all that said, staff recommends a resolution adopting the following actions presented in item A and B below. Are there any questions?
Any comment from the public on this item? All right, any questions from council? Good, we're good, all right.
Thank you.
Go ahead and for a motion.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to accept the adoptive decision taking the following actions of A and B. Do I need to read all the?
I'm sorry, but that was to accept the recommendations A and B, was that correct? Yes.
Second, first and second to approve A and B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nothing, we're good, all right. Let's can go grab Mr. Kirchner. Item number seven is consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll. Welcome Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to thank, first off Samantha Benzel, customer service manager, for her service to the ratepayers throughout the year. Samantha will help with any of the more technical questions that she may be having. Samantha and her team worked very hard to help the ratepayers stay off this list. That's something I do want you to know. Our customer service staff wear many hats day to day. One of them is watching over the utility funds revenues on behalf of the ratepayers. Customer service sometimes comes in the form of urging and helping ratepayers manage delinquencies using a variety of tools to notify, educate, and ease the burden of paying. An impression can arise that the city is the only stakeholder on a delinquent account. But in reality, each ratepayer is responsible for their connection and use of use and every payment not collected becomes the burden of the other nineteen thousand one hundred eleven ratepayers, give or take. Samantha's staff is the most successful revenue recovery outfit we've ever had, and that includes companies that we used to use in the old days. Her staff is diligent about collecting final bills and keeping the entire system in mind when considering fairness. This is a combination of both tenant and owner held accounts. Our municipal code states that property owners are ultimately responsible for the balances regardless of agreements between tenant and owner. Outside of normal billing activities, which allow for owners to receive a copy of a tenant's bill monthly, owners were notified of balances prior to this hearing. Notices were mailed to the owners on June thirteenth. The notices were printed in English, Spanish, and Punjabi. These are the other programs in California to assist with delinquencies. LEWAP, or the Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program. Funding has been distributed annually through two thousand twenty-four through Health and Human Services Office of Community Services as grants to United States territories, tribes, and tribal organizations. The grants assist eligible low-income households by providing funds to owners or operators of public water systems or treatment works to reduce arrears of and rates charged to such households for such services. Since the notices to the owners were mailed on June thirteenth, six accounts were paid in full. And staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution to include delinquent accounts on the secured tax roll. Are there any questions?
Doesn't appear to be from up here. We do have a public hearing scheduled. We'll go ahead and open that. Public hearing for consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax rolls now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public? Go on, come on up.
I just had one question. You always hear about low income, but what about the people who've lost their jobs or those that are on fixed incomes and can't afford, you know, when they raised up the stuff, I'm thinking a pillage, gouge, and extort. Or my bills have gone up this last month, it's four hundred and twelve bucks, and I live in a tiny apartment. But I keep the air conditioner on because of the heat. Anyway, that being said, what do you do for people that are middle income, that have lost their revenue and don't qualify for any programs? Do you have something for those people?
We know anything off the top of your head for that, or is that something that requires some research?
Actually, there was a decision many, many years ago called Big Horn. And Big Horn decision in the Mrs. Langley might be able to correct me, I think it was in the state courts, said that we are not allowed to provide discounts to certain populations. So the only services that might be available be through state or federal agencies. And LEWAP is the only one that I can think of that might apply.
Okay, so you have nothing for people that were just fine before, but due to a circumstances and they can't afford their water bill or their sewage bill or something, so they're just out of luck?
He gave you the option that's available, that we were able to provide. Does the city pay someone's water bill? No?
No, I said, give them some kind of something if they if they have a temporary circumstances. Is there any relief for the normal citizens, the middle class? That's all I wanted to know.
Nothing aware of.
Mr. Mayor, the Big Horn decision actually made such an action illegal.
Thank you for repeating that. So there you go. And just remind everybody, this is comment, because the question can go back and forth if we start doing question and answer. If you start asking questions, we want to be able to give you a well-thought-out and if necessary, researched answer. If we don't know what's coming, we don't have the ability to do that for you. So there's other ways we can get questions answered, but right now we're here for a comment.
Liz Cervantes, eight-six-two, Country Lane, Yuba City, nine-five-nine-nine-one. I have a well, but I do have rental property in the city of Yuba City, and the bills are going up, up, up. I know that recology, I include water, sewer, and garbage in my rents because if you don't and they don't pay, you get a lien, not pleasant. So this is not a practice of the city. You're voting on this tonight? Before now, there hasn't been for water and garbage or sewer?
Is there a comment, not a question?
I would just like to comment that we pay too much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We will go ahead and close the comment period. Bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor? Make a motion to adopt a resolution for the inclusion of delinquency charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that a lien be placed on the subject properties.
Through the mayor, and just clarification, council member, that would include the ability of staff to withdraw any, not file a lien on any properties that have been fully paid out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Second.
First and second to approve the action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Move on to number eight, consideration of inclusion of code enforcement citation fines on secured tax roll. Welcome Doug Libby.
Mayor, council, good evening. So for this item, the purpose of it is to recover unpaid code enforcement citation fines by placing them on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that a lien also be placed on the properties. So as a little background, it was back in two thousand twenty where the city council adopted ordinance oh-one-oh-dash-twenty, which updated our public nuisance ordinance. And then over the two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three, the city established an administrative hearing officer to hear individual cases, provide administrative review on an ad needed basis. So first and foremost, code enforcement's goal is to bring a property into compliance with the municipal code requirements. They try to work with people and work out time schedules in order to see that corrections be made. But if a case does remain unresolved and progress is not being made, then citations are issued as a mechanism to bring a property into compliance. Now, historically, the city has not collected a lot of fines because the collection process has not been in place. So going through this process leading up to tonight was us establishing that. And the city typically has collected less than fifteen hundred dollars per year in fines, and I would say that most of those years it could be less than a thousand. So this is the first of what we, I think, hope would be an annual process to collect these unpaid citations. And it's important because collection helps offset a portion of the cost of the code enforcement program on our city's general fund. So for this item, it involves twenty-nine properties across the city, seventy-one citations, and thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars in proposed costs. And what we mean by proposed costs is that staff did a review and in some circumstances limited the fines to be collected to avoid situations where costs were just too large and unlikely to be paid. So total costs proposed to be collected were capped to a maximum of approximately five thousand dollars. And that was a department decision that was made. So just to give you an idea, this is one of the cases that is included in tonight's proposed resolution. Just wanted to give you a flavor. We did provide slides for each one of the cases, so we would be able to, if anyone brings it up under public comment, we could bring up a slide similar to this for a particular property. This is eleven thirty-three Queens. It was a violation that is still active but began in two thousand twenty-two. Ten notices, eight citations for inoperable vehicles, junk, tarp, just general blight. I want to draw your attention on the ten notices and eight citations. You know, there is a lot of staff effort for the code enforcement officers to make inspections, prepare the ten notices and eight citations. So there's just a lot of effort just on one particular case, and this is just an example. So for public outreach, when a citation is issued, it gives the citizen an opportunity to appeal that citation within a specific timeframe. And we provided some sample documents in your staff report packet. None of the cases that are before you tonight took advantage of that. In addition, we sent out invoices in December of two thousand twenty-three and March of this year. At the March time when we sent the invoices, we also let people know that, you know, if these go unpaid, then we're going to be taking these forward to the city council for consideration. And then finally, a fifteen-day notice was issued on June twenty-eighth, advising them of tonight's meeting. So the recommended action is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution of the city council for the inclusion of unpaid code enforcement citation fines on the tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that a lien also be placed on the properties. Now, I would mention, just a reminder, I think, mayor, you brought this up, that there was an updated resolution provided at the beginning of the meeting. The reason for that is we actually, since your staff report went out, we had two cases which actually they paid the fines. And so we updated the resolution to reflect that, so they're not included. And also wanted to note that if you take action tonight and someone were to come in and pay the fine, we would then correct the resolution to make sure that it's not put on that property. So with that, that would conclude my comments. And like I said, we do have slides for each case if you wanted to go into the uncut weeds.
Literally. Now, I think we're good. That's very thorough and maybe been more than fair. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing for consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services to my, are we on number eight right now? Am I reading the wrong one? Public hearing for, okay, I was reading number seven. Public hearing, consideration of inclusion of code enforcement citation fines on secured tax rolls now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comment on this item? Hearing no further comment. I'm closing the public hearing and bringing back the matter to council, please.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt with any, with all, any administrative resolution calling for the placement of a general tax, excuse me, wrong one.
Did the same thing.
Let's try that, let's try that again. My apologies, my apologies. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for the inclusion of a unpaid code enforcement citation fines on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that a lien be also be placed on the subject properties.
Ultimate, Mr. Kirchner, would that also include the authorization to staff to remove anything that is already paid before the lien gets filed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Second.
First and second to approve the action item on number eight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Doug. Now I'll read the right one here. We're on number nine. Consideration of November twenty twenty-four ballot measure to authorize one cent sales tax. Hello, city manager?
Good evening, mayor and council. So Yuba City's current sales tax rate is seven point two five percent, which is the state minimum. Of that, Yuba City receives one percent that goes towards the general fund, which equates to approximately eighteen million dollars annually. If you look at neighboring jurisdictions to Yuba City, they currently have If you look at neighboring jurisdictions to Yuba City, um they currently have uh tax measures in place in which Yuba County receives uh their tax rate's eight point two five percent, Marysville's eight point two five percent, Chico's eight point two five percent, and Calusa is eight point seven five percent. So starting in December of two thousand twenty-two, council designated a revenue ad hoc comprised of council member Boom Garden and Mayor Harris. And the um purpose of that ad hoc was to evaluate um city priorities and then also uh the potential for a revenue measure. Through that process, um working with a citizens group, they identified roads because we have a backlog of approximately hundred fifty million dollars worth of maintenance, fire operations to maintain um critical staffing levels and response times, then also replace fire station number one, and then police operations to add dedicated homeless uh response personnel, create a citywide clean team, and then also take over law enforcement services for the Happy Park Walton area located south of Franklin, west of Highway ninety-nine, in which the sheriff currently provides services. With that as well, council um expressed a strong desire to support Sutter County, uh particularly the district attorney's office, the sheriff's department, jail, and then homeless response efforts. And as part of the ad hoc um process, they worked with the county designated ad hoc to work out tentative terms for a tax sharing agreement in which the city would receive sixty-seven percent if the measure were approved, and the county would receive thirty-three percent to go towards um district attorney's office, sheriff, uh roads, things that benefit Yuba City residents, because Yuba City residents are Sutter County residents too. So December of two thousand twenty-three, um the city council and the board of supervisors had a joint meeting in which the revenue ad hoc committee uh recommendations were identified in terms of a general one percent sales tax led by Yuba City within city limits. Uh it's a general sales tax, but it would, the priority could be things such as roads and public safety. Revenue shared with Sutter County included citizens oversight committee. And so um at a previous meeting, uh the city council adopted a resolution that identified the scope of work, the term um how people would qualify for that citizens oversight committee. And no competing overlapping initiatives from Sutter County, and then in effect until ended by voters. And so here before you tonight is the proposed uh ballot language. And um I'm not going to read it, um but basically it's identifying it is a general sales tax which requires a fifty percent plus one approval. Um and it could go towards things such as road repairs, increasing police and fire protection, protecting nine-one-one emergency response times, addressing homelessness, and funding other general services and essential activity. That one percent general sales tax is estimated to um will generate seventeen point five million dollars. And again, uh the tax sharing agreement with Sutter County will come before the city council and the board of supervisors. Um I would say probably within by the end of September uh to both agencies for approval. And with that, it would specify again that thirty-three percent to Sutter County and sixty-seven percent to Yuba City. So with that, uh the fiscal impact, so of course the city will be responsible for our portion of the election costs. We have two council seats on the ballot as well as the city clerk and the city treasurer. We'd have this item as well. And then if the ballot measure were to pass, it would go into effect April twenty twenty-five with the city receiving um the benefit of it in June of twenty twenty-five. The alternatives are to not proceed with the revenue measure at this time or to change the amount of the proposed sales tax. The next steps again are the city-county um tax sharing agreement and then November fifth, twenty twenty-four election. So the recommendation is to receive public input tonight, it's nice to see that we have public here. And then also adopt with any amendments a resolution calling for the placement of a general tax measure on the ballot for the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um you've all been heavily involved in this. I want to thank everybody that's allowed us to come and present information on this, and we will continue to present information. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any public comment on this item? Okay, yeah, one second, we got them right here. I have four speaker cards, and again, you're not required to have a speaker card. If someone would like to say something after we hear these four folks, please feel free to speak up and come on up. Number one received was uh Lawrence Mertz. Followed by Ed, I think it says Dominic.
Down already. Mayor, city council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you. I am not speaking as a citizen, but I'm Lawrence Mertz, I live on Pablo Court in Yuba City. But what I'm speaking for is the taxpayers association, and I wanted to thank you, recognize you for the presentation you offered my group last night. And it was a very informative presentation regarding the city tax measure that beyond the November ballot. I wanted to thank city manager Diane Langley and the numerous city staff, Sutter County sheriff and DA for providing a very informative presentation uh yesterday evening for the taxpayers association. This city tax measure presentation was well structured, well articulated, and received by most of the audience. I received a lot of positive comments as well as negative. Even though additional taxes are not part of the spending plans to most of the taxpayers, your presentation clearly reflected a structural need in the city for this tax increase to maintain necessary city services. The controversial cost sharing agreement between Sutter County and Yuba City was also a plus, was well understood and well received. Thank you again for your efforts to bring this need before the voters. I really like how well the city staff articulated this. I requested two people, I got half the city there. And it was well known, it was well recognized, thank you.
All right, thank you, Larry.
Good evening. What brought me to this meeting was a uh article in the
Sir, if you wouldn't mind stating your name, please.
Oh, Ed Dimick.
Dimick, all right, thank you.
But I misunderstood what this was about. I had gone through a similar thing about transportation only uh over twenty years ago when I was living in Contra Costa County, in which there was a proposal for a half cent sales tax to supposedly deal with the massively horrible traffic problem they had down there. And uh it turned out to just be building new roads to serve the new development that was going in. And a handful of us decided to oppose that. We could only uh do a ballot argument. The other side did massively mailing after mailing to tell people why it was so badly needed because of the dealing with the problem. And we pointed out in the ballot argument that it only would uh deal with the new developments and wouldn't improve anything. We were outspent six hundred fifty thousand to one thousand, and we won easily with our simple ballot uh argument. So a citizens advisory group was created, and we came up with it represented various uh people in the area. We came up with what we thought was the perfect plan, and the voters liked it, approved it. State senators uh cop and cats also liked it, are on eighty percent of what we wrote to produce the congestion management program, which was presented to the state voters and they approved it. And it worked out great, so I like the way you're going with having a citizen advisory committee, assuming that it deals properly with all the various uh aspects of the city. You can come up with something that's really good, but has was pointed out by an earlier speaker, you're picking a bad time to do it. A lot of people are having difficulty making ends meet. And so I'm not sure that you could write the perfect argument, the perfect ballot measure, and have it succeed in this environment. I really question doing it at this time. Otherwise, you need to look at it from a person in that position and see if there's any red flags to show up. There's a number of them I can think of, but uh at this point I won't mention them other than what I mentioned already.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mister Dimick. Next is number three, Liz Cervantes.
Liz Cervantes, eight, six, two, Country Lane, Yuba City, California, nine, five, nine, nine, one. Do you know why people love shopping in Yuba City? Because we have a seven point two five percent tax rate, right? Why can't we be different? This is what I try to tell these bozos. They don't listen, and I don't think you're listening either. Because who doesn't love paying more taxes, right? We all know how much fun it is to hand over our hard-earned money to the government so they can figure out new and exciting ways to spend it. Why stop at just the essentials when you can contribute even more to their pensions and salaries? Did you get a seven percent pay increase last year? Imagine the joy of seeing that higher total at the cash register. Forget about saving up for that college tuition or treating yourself to something nice because your contribution to the sales tax increase means you're already living the dream of supporting government projects that they can't even pinpoint. And hey, who needs affordable goods and services when you can have the satisfaction of knowing your tax dollars are doing the heavy lifting? Forget economic growth and consumer spending, let's just tax ourselves into prosperity. Because really, why should anyone have disposable income when the government can take care of it for you? So this election season, remember, a vote against the sales tax increase is a vote against progress, prosperity, and the sheer thrill of watching your paycheck shrink. Let's keep those tax dollars flowing, boys, and the government programs growing. Because who needs financial freedom anyways? And I use all three of my minutes. May I remind you, I'm not quite sure why you are including the county of Sutter in this agreement. I don't know if you think it's gonna be a kumbaya moment, but may I remind you what they did to you, how they treated you, how it was played out in the public? I have not forgotten, and I know that there are some of you on that dice that have not forgotten either. Please, I'm asking you, we have the potential for a new administration in November. Please let him straighten things out if he can. If you still need your tax increase, how about November twenty twenty-five? Okay, you're not helping, you are enabling. Please do not enable anymore, we've had it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stephanie Gagnasco.
Okay, um I like what Larry said and Liz, but I wanted to ask you, do you remember Sabifka? How they were trying to sell that to us, the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency? And what was one of their big points? Oh, we're gonna have a citizens oversight committee. Once they got the money, what did they do to that citizens oversight committee? They basically fired them. I mean, they were volunteer citizens, so they had zero input, so a campaign promised down the toilet. But I'm sure they paid their fees to this to the city for that flushing purpose. But um I remember one time going to a meeting when they're talking how great it was, and they lied. I happened to be at the Department of Transportation in DC and thought I'd advocate for my city. I come back, I heard that lie, and I went to them privately. I said, why did you lie? They'd never heard of Yuba City, you never sent anything to them. They go, well, we didn't know somebody was gonna spy on us and check up. Well, if you're a citizen, you do the best you can to promote your your city, you know, your fellow citizens. That's what we learned in the army. Actually, we learned that uh government talks, they probably lie, look twice. But anyway, we trusted our leaders, and what do we get? And right now, I heard you say, how much of that one percent is a city actually gonna get?
We get all of it, but if you're talking about the sharing, it's sixty-seven thirty-three.
Sixty-seven thirty thirty-three, so somebody else gets the thirty-three.
That's the that's the county that we were talking.
I thought from the state, how much does a state keep?
Zero.
Okay, I was just gonna tell you how wonderful New Salini is with his friend Biden. So, okay, at least that's got taken care of. But I don't believe, I want guarantees that the um there is a citizens oversight committee because that has failed every step of the way on everything we've been promised. And we know that uh in about a month or so, our economy is gonna be crashing big time. Our state has been spending more, squandering more than we could possibly take in, including eight hundred and fifty billion from EDD to Communist China. And the numbers, yeah, I can show all that. Or look how much money we're spending on uh voting machines, which Kevin Shelley, back what, twenty years ago, already tried to get them for criminal fraud, sent all the stuff over from the State Department to the uh Attorney General's Office, and they quashed it. Here we are twenty years later, we still have the same problem, and all they do is talk about rhetoric. Oh, there's election deniers and there's oh us who benefit from selections. You know, for how many, what, two hundred some odd years? And I don't remember the first day because it was a little bit before I was born, contrary to other people's opinion, especially the small ones. Because I took a boat ride with a dude named Noah, but uh
Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else care to comment on this item? Come on up. Are you Deborah by chance?
I am.
Okay, very good.
Hello, I'm Deborah DeRozier, I live in South Yuba City. And I remember a couple years ago when uh Marysville did their measure K, uh and they were gonna fix the roads. And I don't know if you've driven in Marysville lately, but I have, and that isn't working well. The other thing, um you know, everybody loves the sound of a citizens oversight committee, but I've actually been on one before, and it's actually a citizens aftersite committee because you don't get to see anything until it's been done. And you can write reports all day long, but it doesn't matter because the money's gone. Um and also the they they have no no power. And last night I was at the meeting with the um Sutter County Taxpayers Association. I was told that you can do a grand jury report to complain if you're not happy with how the money's being spent, which is pathetic. Because the grand jury works hard to do their reports, but nobody cares. Also, um I noticed your citizens advisory committee was all people that had businesses in the area. I didn't see anybody on there that was like a normal citizen like me that it's actually going to affect because the sales tax is a regressive tax, and it affects us people that uh don't make. I don't know, I don't make that much money, I I work for a taxpayers association, it's a nonprofit, so. Anyway, I I don't make a lot of money, so it's gonna affect me. It's also gonna affect my friend that's a hundred and one that's on social security, it's gonna affect her a lot. Also, um having the your information um doing an audit. When you do an audit, your annual reports or your 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 CAFERS, they're not very detailed on how the funds were spent. So I'm wondering, in your audits, how detailed are we going to be able to see the use of this funds? Um because it is going into the general fund, so it can go for anything, and money's all fungible, so. You know, I I don't, I I just don't trust it, but I'll have to see wait and see how detailed your annual report is that this is gonna produce. And um, oh, that tax sharing agreement with the specific disbursements going to the county, to the DA and the sheriff on a general sales tax, how legal is that? Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else care to comment? All right, we can go ahead and bring it back. Oh, we do, sorry, thank you. Thank you. No, we don't. False start. All right, that's okay. All right. Now we're back.
Oh, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, anybody want?
Thank you through the mayor. I think that, obviously, this journey starts, at least it starts for me in December of twenty nineteen, when I was actually seated in this seat up here and began the process of engaging as city council people do with the goal and priority of making sure that the city of Yuba City provided essential services. And that's been a theme of mine from the beginning. And essential services are defined by me as roads, water, sewer, police, and fire. So when I take a look at expenditures, those have always been the items that I want to make sure that we are funding within our ability to spend. For those of you who don't know, and I really don't want to go into a biography, but I will. I have a lot of history with the city's budget. Thirty years in the fire department, fifteen as a fire chief, as a department head. When I left the fire department, I ran a company called Valley Truck and Tractor as an operations manager and eventually the president. Probably at least a budget that was one and a half times the city's, one hundred and sixty employees for a profit. And one of the things that I hoped to bring to the city was some business acumen. That company did well, always turned a profit until the fact that we sold it. So, you know, my experience with budgeting and taking a look at things, I feel pretty comfortable with it. I'm not an expert, but at the same time, that's the lens I looked through since twelve nineteen when I looked at the city's budget. I ran initially as a no taxer. I'm not a tax guy. I'm very physically conservative. And so for me to pivot and get to a point where I felt that we owed it to the citizens of Yuba City, number one, to have a choice about the services they deliver and the level of those services is a big leap for me. As a member of the ad hoc committee with the mayor, we took a long, hard look after four or five years of budget scrubbing here in the city of Yuba City, along with our staff and our fellow council people. It became clear to me that if we didn't at least take a look at increasing revenue, we were going to be in a position that I didn't feel comfortable with me and my family, who, by the way, are thirty, twenty-five, and twenty-five, and they are certainly not wealthy, were going to be impacted by. So it got to a point where it was pretty clear to me that the revenue picture for the city of Yuba City, while not dire, and while we're not threatening to close things or any of that malarkey that usually goes on, there will come a time in the future where revenues will not meet expenditures. And we can go back and forth about those things, but the bottom line for me goes back to roads, water, sewer, police, and fire. The, there is no good time for a tax. I certainly don't want to tax myself. Those, and some will say, well, you can afford it. Okay, define affordability. My twenty-five-year-old that's not working and is out living on his own right now. But I want to make sure, and he wants to make sure, there's quality of life here in the city of Yuba City. So I, you know, to sit back and say that I don't have a stake in this, I represent, you know, a fifth of the city, my own friends and family, those that were on the oversight committee, their employees, they represented. They represented themselves as well. They and, along with us, decided that it would be worthwhile for the city of Yuba City to consider proposing and giving the opportunity for the residents to choose whether or not they want to pay a one percent tax. There was a question that was just brought up, why don't you do it in November of twenty five? We can't. If you put a sales tax revenue measure up, it has to go when there's a general election. You can't do it as a special election. So the timing is either now or in two years. Well, I'm afraid in two years, we might be in a situation that we've seen in other places where we have a problem already, and now we're trying to catch up. We are trying to do the prudent thing, which is get ahead of a situation that we can see. That's what good business is. The oversight committee, I've sat on an oversight committee, and I would agree. That oversight committee was a rubber stamper. And I'm here to tell everybody and anybody and have told those folks who I've reached out to that that is not what I intend to construct here in the city of Yuba City. Because I don't want a rubber stamp city, and I hope those of you who are watchdogs apply. Because guess what? That's the kind of person I want on an oversight committee. Because if this measure passes, this is a legacy thing that I don't want that money to be squandered off to do other things, period. That's just not, in fact, when I get off the council, I'll probably raise my hand beyond the damn oversight committee because I feel strongly about this. The issue here a lot of times is trust, and I get it, you know, every day. I mean, look what's going on right now in the country. You know, it's a leap of faith. I don't expect that anyone just gives you trust. You have to earn that trust. And I would hope that over the last five years, five and a half years, that there's a track record of the folks that are sitting up here. Some of us haven't been along that long, but I believe these are trustworthy individuals as well. I believe that we have not violated any trust. Do we always fire on all eight cylinders in the city? Absolutely not, okay? Thirty years as a fire chief guarantee you, and involved with all the departments, cities make mistakes. It happens. They're not intentional generally, but it happens. Are we always going to be perfect? No, are we striving to be perfect? Yes. Are we trying to create a culture that puts citizens first and services right there with it? Yes. If we're going to continue to do that, we're going to have to be able to fund those services. And that's why I'm in support of a revenue measure. I think it's the right time to ask. The citizens will have their speak, and I'm looking forward to informing as many people as possible, and we've been doing a great job of that so far. I think we've done absolutely great, and I commend my fellow councilmen for getting out in the streets, in the meetings, and reaching out and informing the public so that they can make an informed decision. And that's probably enough from me right now.
Well said. Anybody else care to comment before we?
Through the mayor. I'm a citizen just like the rest of you. I was elected to do the best I can for you. You're going to decide whether this is important to you and your community. Our streets are terrible. There is no money. We've got one and a half million dollars to fix a hundred and fifty million dollar problem. Tell me how that works. Doesn't. You can't cut your budget thirty percent. I've never seen anybody be able to run an organization and cut their budget by thirty percent. Doesn't work. We'll have nothing. This is my community. It's been my community for sixty-seven years. I don't want it to be some seedy little town that nobody wants to come to. And if you don't decide that that's important to you, then you go and you vote, and you make those decisions. You don't have police to show up. You don't have a proper fire department facility to cover the calls. On a personal note, the police department, eight years ago, showed up at my door, and I bet about three and a half minutes and saved my life. That's starting to erode. If it goes to twelve, you're dead. I would have been dead. So these are the kinds of things when this was brought to me as a citizen, just like the rest of you that pay taxes, that don't like any more taxes, but it's the reality of the situation that we live in today. That unless we do something and increase our revenue by double, actually, from what our sales tax would be, this is a win-win for everyone in this community. Everyone in this community doesn't pay all of that sales tax. We've got thirty, forty percent of the people traveling through this community that are going to be paying that sales tax. Those are free dollars for people just coming through, buying their gas, buying their whatever they're buying and moving on. So I am in complete behind, completely behind this revenue measure because I want my community that I live in with the rest of you to be a nice place and have the resources to supply all of the fire, the police, the water, the sewer, the roads. And as far as a guarantee, what guarantees are there in anything that we do in life? The only thing I can tell you is that if I don't put up and say what I'm going to do, vote me out. Very easily. If I don't say that I'm going to do what I'm going to do, vote me out. And I have no problem with taking that on the chin. Pardon me? When am I up for reelection? In two and a half years. So with that, that's all I have to say with you. I am a citizen just like the rest of you in Sutter County, as well as the city of Yuba City, which is in Sutter County. People keep trying to divide the thing that, I'm in Yuba City, I'm, well, I'm a Sutter County resident, just like the rest of you, all of you. And so it's important. This is really an important thing to do for our community, and I am fully behind this revenue measure. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Man, that's hard to follow. Great job, though. And you go third, everything's pretty much been said, but great job. There was a lot said earlier, and I'm trying to unpack some of that. I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with the comment about nobody listens to the grand jury report. I was on the grand jury, and I do believe that there's a lot of work that goes into that report because I've written that report. And the recommendation last year for the Sutter County Grand Jury for the city of Yuba City was a one-cent sales tax specifically just to address the roads. We want to expand that to address how competitive it is and how difficult it is to maintain and provide for public safety. So I want to address that first. Just for clarification, though, the oversight committee has not been solidified at this point, correct?
So you have identified the scope of work, the term, all the parameters of it. In the ordinance, the citizen oversight committee would be created should the measure pass?
Thank you. So the folks that are concerned about who's on that, this is an opportunity to sign up for. Simple as that. Make sure that we're doing our jobs. If you have an opportunity to talk to an engineer or anybody who's in construction, they will tell you how expensive roads are in two thousand twenty-four in the state of California. Somebody mentioned earlier about having difficulty navigating the roads. I believe this body is doing its fiduciary responsibility by addressing it now rather than waiting for it to get more expensive. And oh, by the way, a lot like healthcare, the longer preventative healthcare, the longer you put that off, the more expensive you got. Roads are the same way. The longer you put them off, the more expensive they're going to get. That's just the way it is. If we, and we do listen to our, our, our public safety experts, and they're telling us that we do need an updated fire station, Fire Station One, that was created in the sixties when this town had all of maybe eight or nine thousand people, residents in it. So to be clear and to offset any possibility of being misquoted on this, I am all for this measure. And we're going to put it out there. This body cannot impose this. This is all about putting it out to the community and letting them choose it, whether or not they want to, whether or not they agree with us or not. And we'll let the chips fall where they may, and that's all I've got to say on this.
Guess I got an extra, huh?
If you want.
Great comments so far. I'm going to try to, and they've done this before, I'm going to bring this back in, as I said last night, kind of to the dining room table because this is really where the rubber meets the road for all of us. Whether we're setting up here on the dais or we're, you know, out there, we all sit down at home with our families, usually around the dining room table, that's where most American families do, and talk about hard issues. You know, and there's a lot to unpack tonight, and there's a lot that's going on in our country. And when you look at all that, you know, back to what you said, Mark, earlier, there's never a right time. And I was of what the gentleman said earlier, let's do it in two years, let's do it in four years. That was my thoughts before. And there's never going to be a perfect time. You know, I am a very straight-line, conservative Republican, and that's where I line up. I hate taxes. I do taxes, it's one of my careers for a living, and I hate them because I hate having to pay what I pay in taxes every year, along with what I watch my clients have to pay in taxes. And we've jumped through every hoop and hurdle there is in the tax code, which is about as tall as this wall now, to get to those answers. It's atrocious. You know, it's atrocious what was started way back then, but it is America. This is what we live in. You know, when you get to that, for me to go from, as Mark and I came on the council at the same time, we were both, no, it's got to be specific, don't do it, don't want it, not going there. To get to where I look and see the need, I have to take off that hat and put on the hat, as you said, as a fiduciary. Our job is not to do what feels good and is going to get us reelected or going to get kumbayas. Folks, I've got seventy-five thousand people in my family that call Yuba City home. I got to look after them. And my job is, in our capacity here, is police, fire, water, sewer, you just heard about the water lines earlier, and roads. It's the infrastructure. That's our job. Now, do I want, you know, my kids live here, my whole family lives here. It's much like, you know, Mark's, my kids live at home, you know? My kids live at home. They can't afford California, not just Yuba City, to get out on their own. I love having my kids at home. You know, it's a blessing to us to have them there, and so I feel like it's a blessing to keep that burden off of them as long as possible. But at the end of the day, I've got seventy-five thousand people that we've got to look after. We got to make those hard choices. And I will tell you, first of all, I hate taxes. But when you look at it, we can't do what Washington, D.C. has done for years now. And that's just spin, 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 and then come on the backside and go, how the hell are we going to pay for this? Oh, now we're going to raise taxes. Now we're going to do this. Now we're going to do that. What we've all brought to this council in the last five years is looking at things from a business perspective, a family perspective, and a trust perspective. Because I hear you loud and clear, and I will tell you, and I think I've got liberty. If I'm wrong, Mark, please correct me in this, but I think at least two of us that ran for this council is because we got tired of seeing the trust being broke. And I will tell you, the night that I decided to run for the council, I was standing right for that lady is standing right there. And I was getting lectured by the man that was sitting in that chair. It wasn't him. They're no longer here. And a total disrespect and everything else. And that was the point in time I said, something's got to change. I don't know what Mark's was, but it was along the same lines because we were running together, you know, separate but together at the time. And we came on to make a change, and this is not an easy decision. You know, you talked about Measure A, what went on in the county. Trust me, out of all five of us up here, I'm the one that hadn't forgot, pardon the French, a damn thing that went on because I was blamed for every damn thing that went on, okay? So I have not forgotten that. So when I look at what happened two years ago and I look at what happened now, this journey began five years ago, five and a half years ago, when we came on trying to turn this ship, and it's kind of like, you know, turning the Titanic, there's your oar right there, your rudder. We're turning it very slowly, but we've made a hell of a lot of progress, okay? We're not going to come out here and scare you. We're not going to come out here and do what the county did with Measure A, and I'm going to call it what it was. They were, we're closing this, we're closing that, we're closing this, we're closing that, okay? Right now, the city's okay, but we're looking forward, and we see exactly what's coming. Okay, as a Republican, I don't want to raise taxes. Okay, as a Republican, I don't wanna raise taxes. It's anti-Republican. But yet at the same time, I want freaking new roads, because I'm tired, like you said, of getting the hell beat out of me driving down some of the roads, and they suck. So what's the solution? And I've asked people, when we first started talking about this months ago. My emails got lit up and it was like, I've told you bozos, we're not gonna do this, blah, 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 blah. I said, then please tell me what in the hell we're going to do. I'm open to ideas. Do you know how many ideas I've had? Zero. This is just part of inherent of who we are as Americans and our citizens. We think we have. Our rights and we can do things, and it just really turns into a moan and bitch session of I don't like things, I don't want things. And we don't have any ideas to fix it. What we're trying to bring forward is ideas to actually address and fix the problems that we have and the concerns. So, you know. We're doing it totally different than what was done two years ago. And let's start with the Oversight Committee. You talk about that. We haven't selected anyone. And we wanted to have teeth. We've already gone so far as to pass a resolution. That once this becomes. Uh, an actual sales tax by ordinance now, not resolution that you can just at a next council meeting, we're gonna get rid of them. But it becomes an ordinance. In our code, that we're going to have this Oversight Committee and give them the authority that we're gonna have. Briefly talk about the economy, you know? Um, I agree with you. I, this is what I do all, all day long. The economy has not been good for several years now. Inflation's been out of control, things are going on, but a little something's happened in the last forty-eight hours. Okay? And the market and the economy is already. Uh, baking in changes coming in November, okay, which could turn the economy around. We're looking at a lot of things happening, so we hope that that happens. But I will tell you, we're all feeling it right now, period. When we go to the gas pump, we go to the grocery store, everywhere we go, cost is up. So we hope our elected officials in DC can turn this around and fix the economy, but our focus is on taking care of our family right here. You know, when it comes to the county, um. These boys will tell you, um, out of the chute, because of what happened previous, I wasn't, no, but I was hell no. But again, I had to take a step back. Listen to my compadres up here. And really do what's best for our citizens of the city. And that's where we're talking about potentially sharing with the county thirty-three percent. And we would love for them to spend that on sheriff services and the DA and homeless. Because those services absolutely, you know, are mutually beneficial. Now, the thing about what we're talking about tonight is just. This, the, the sales tax measure. As Ms. Langley said, somewhere in the next few months, we'll be talking about that whole revenue possible share thing. So they're disconnected. They're not one in the same. They're disconnected. So do I think we should share with, and, and in concept, I think Sheriff Barnes and our DA. Uh, need help. And I think that we as good citizens and good family members, because we're all in the same city. We need to pitch in and help. And if you listened to them last night, they told you what they were faced with. As a matter of fact, there, there they are in the back. They were talking last night at the meeting that. Don't just give them thirty-three percent. They wanted to give the county more. I went, whoa, we need at least sixty-seven percent here, but they got it, you know, or the couple standing in the back. So I round all of that out. To, to what Mark has said earlier. I've heard you compare us tonight in public comment. To, to Marysville and the county and other places. But what I have not heard you compare us to is the record that the five of us, or most of the five of us have done for five and a half years. And we have worked pretty damn hard to stand by what we say and do what we say. And what we're asking is for you to extend us a little bit of trust. So that we can take the next steps to take care of our family of seventy-five thousand people. Because if we don't. Here's what's gonna happen down the road. The five of us with our city team is gonna be sitting around our kitchen table here at City Hall. And we're gonna be figuring out how to make our budget work and how to repair the roads. And how to increase law enforcement and how to take care of the fire department with a budget that's shrinking. We don't want that to happen. So that's why we're thinking down the line. So, you know. You're talking to the person that has swung from the farthest to the one side. Back the other side. And going through everything with a fine-tooth comb, we'll be looking at that agreement coming up in a few months. Looked at the sales tax measure. But this is what we've gotta do, folks. If not. Just think about it setting at your kitchen table with your family, trying to figure out how you're gonna pay your bills. Well, that's what we're gonna be doing as well. No, it's not. Okay.
Just a reminder to the public, this is the opportunity for the city council members to speak. The public has already had the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we're going to continue moving forward, and I will close out my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So four hard acts to follow. I would just say, um, I too, of course, do not like taxes, and the reason we got to this point was after years. Of examining in detail the budget and we. Staring down the barrel of decreasing revenues, increasing costs, just like everybody else, never, so many other households out there. Uh, in, in municipality like a city, we get our revenue from taxes primarily. And so that's where we have to go if we wanna maintain. The current level of services and ideally try to figure out a way to get creative and improve services. As my colleagues have said, police, fire, water, sewer, and roads, so that's our main priorities. We have other priorities as well. But after, eh, looking and being on, on the committee and whatnot. That is the only place left to turn, and we put it off and we put it off. Has also been discussed today is, you know, we, we try to look ahead and be visionary here, and we can hear the train coming right at us. We wait until we have, until we're injured and we, and we're having some bad things going on. No, we try to get in front of it. And try to address it, and that's why we've done such a, I think, everyone has done such a great job. Educating and informing community members, anybody who will listen, as to the why behind this potential revenue measure, why we need it. Um, and the reasons are extraordinary, and, and as, uh, Vice Mayor said, um. My rebuttal has always been when people say, what about, how do we know? How do we know? What are we gonna do? That's where we have to reach out and ask, as, as fellow community members. Ask for a morsel of that trust that was given to us when they checked the box next to our name in the voting booth. There's a reason why we got those. Let's ca- capitalize on that. I know. That we will do what we need to do and, uh, what we, what we plan to do with this money. We're not gonna squander it. I guarantee that. And that's another reason why we have the watchdog by, by name of the Citizens Oversight Committee. To go in independently, verify what we're doing. And anybody can get a copy of our budget and, and enjoy, and we will be happy to answer questions and we can go through anything like that. To answer questions. It's, the information is available. The frustration, I will say, is when people wanna jump to conclusions, always negative. That things are not being done the way they're supposed to be doing. I guarantee that we are doing the very best. Us, staff, everybody, working together as transparently as possible, as thoroughly as possible, to the very best we possibly can. We will not, not ever do anything illegal. On purpose. We will not ever do anything wrong on purpose. That's why we always welcome audits. Bring them. That's gonna cause us to improve. We're not scared of it at all, because. We're all, we know that in our heart, we're trying to do the right thing for the right reason, the right way, the first time. That's the way we do business. We have, uh, done a deep analysis. We have very extremely competent financial staff over here. Extremely competent city manager, and the list goes on and on. And we've all come to this conclusion, it's, it's necessary to come out to the voters, explain why we need it, and give them the opportunity to say yes or no. Hopefully, the answer is yes. No is gonna be quite challenging, but we will go through that too. But, um, just for the record, I too remain wholeheartedly and confidently in support of the measure. So. We have an action item here today. Basically, the, um. Adopt a resolution.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to move that we adopt with any amendments, a resolution calling for the placement of a general tax measure on the ballot for November fifth to twenty twenty-four. General municipal election for the submission to the voters of an ordinance to enact a general transaction and use tax. Sales tax at the rate of one cent.
Point of clarification?
Percent.
Mr. Chaffin, there is no amendments to the resolution, correct?
That is correct.
So we can strike that?
We can strike that. It's just to adopt the resolution, if that's okay with the motion maker.
The, what we're removing with any amendments portion of the.
Correct.
That's right, because the city council did not make any amendments this evening. Um, either way, that, that works. It's technically correct either direction.
Okay.
I wanna make sure the one cent is the proper, uh, terminology versus per.
One percent.
Yeah, it's a one percent, which is one cent.
One percent.
Second.
First and second to approve the action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Onto number ten. This is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Any comments on the public, from the public? Comments from council. All right, we'll go on to reports and communications. Beginning with city manager.
All right, thank you. Uh, so the trimming of the trees started on Pluma Street. Uh, they started down at the south end near Bridge Street. Um, it's gonna take approximately ten days. They're gonna operate from five AM to ten AM. And if you drive down during that time, expect, um, some traffic delays because they are maintaining one lane of traffic, so there are flaggers there. Um, it is making a remarkable difference in the look of the trees. And, um, I think, I think it looks good. It's, it's cleaning up the tree scape. And then also, uh, anybody attended the last council meeting. Significant discussion related to Merriman Village and an agreement with Habitat for Humanity. And I just want to thank Shannon and his team, because they pulled the agreement together and we recorded the agreement, um, last week. And so that was a heavy lift on, um, Shannon's party. He was emailing on Fourth of July. And I just really appreciate all of his efforts to get that through. So thank you.
And thank you very much, um. Councilmember Boongarten.
Um, just a couple of, of, uh, items, um, attended the, uh, the parade on Pluma Street. Uh, phenomenal turnout, thanks to parks, rec, fire, all the city staff that helped to, to produce that. It seemed like I, I had questions about it being well-attended on a Thursday. Normally, a lot of folks out of town, and it was blistering hot. But I, I think it was equally, if not more, attended than in the past, and, and it's just a great event. Uh, I did attend last night's taxpayers' association. I don't think we need to go over that anymore tonight. I did want to, uh, I, I don't know, the rest of the council, I, I did mention this to our city attorney. Um, you know, there was a lot of questions about why Uba City went to districts, and, you know, we always, we had the opportunity. And or the, the, uh, probably the, yes, the opportunity to not go into district, districting. And there was a recent decision in the city of Cypress, down in Southern California, Orange County. Where they opted to fight that districting, and, uh, they just lost eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, with court costs, et cetera, and, you know, it's going to be a million. So. Thank you, Shannon and Diana, for shepherding us through that process, and to the rest of us that had a hand in moving that along. Um, there's validation of, uh, a very good decision.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, start with, uh, Sutter Boots Flood Control Agency. We did approval. Of plans and specifications for consideration of a ward for the River District Melt Meter Vault. Re- rehabilitation project, construction contract, uh, also the approval of the agreement. Between Sutter Boots Flood Control Agency and Uba County regarding grant funding at Star Bend. Uh, sediment removal project. Um, also the adoption of a workplace, workplace, uh, violence prevention plan. With, um, with mosquito, we had our quarterly review. Uh, the district's defined benefit plan, also the final budget approval for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, there are, at the time, we're currently, uh, three West Nile cases in Uba County, so they're keeping an eye on that. Uh, Gilser was canceled. Uh, Regional Water, Regional Water Agency, uh, approval of Department of Water Resources Watershed Resilience Pilot Project Grant Agreement. Also approval, uh, uh, approved professional services agreement with Jacob Engineering Group, uh, for one point seven million. Lastly, uh, they, the, uh, applied a one point nine percent COLA. Uh, agreement for the employees. Attended a couple of, uh, it looks like ribbon cuttings, uh, City, City Cafe Social. And also with the Vice Mayor. Was it? Rians? Rent, Rens? I can't read my writing. Obah Enrolls, a couple of businesses in town. Thank you. Um, uh. The Fourth of July Parade, well-attended, and that night, I was privileged to do a ride along with our, our police department. To see the real action. Um, and I'll tell you, nothing happened until the sun went down, and then everything happened at once. And, uh, the amount of calls that came through was just, just over the top. I think this is gonna be an ongoing issue that, uh, a lot of communities are dealing with, including ours, but I got my hats off to. The police department for the long hours they put in that night. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor for inviting me to the event, which is a yearly, uh. Program out there at the Hard Rock that, uh, generates funds for, uh, local nonprofits, and that's what I've got.
Very good. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I attended Sabuca for my colleague in his absence. And I've, I'm not on that committee as a, a permanent, I'm on alternate. But I can definitely see the value of Sabuca in making our community flood-resistant. Uh, and I also attended the Fourth of July Kids Parade, and I rode my bicycle. And, uh, I, it was, it was fun. I enjoyed it. The, the kids, the kids are a, a kick. So with that.
I conclude my report.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keep it short. Fourth of July, they've already said it, you guys rocked, fire, everybody. Great job. Uh, did the, uh, ribbon cutting, uh, on behalf of, uh, the mayor for, uh. City Social and, um, and then also for, uh, Rims, uh, Obah Enrolls. I was great to do that. Been tied up with the, uh, the fundraiser for the event, which was, uh, off the charts, and, uh. I got a lot of meetings coming up the next few days, so there'll be more to report next time.
I'm gonna be, be chair length, easy. Gilser was canceled. I attended the Fourth of July Parade. It was wonderful, very well-attended, my favorite holiday for all those reasons. Even those who, uh, attended, uh, experienced, it was a wonderful time. I'm happy to know we didn't have a whole lot of injuries. At the celebration, the river bottoms are throughout the neighborhood. Yes, the police department definitely has their work cut out for them. Um, very busy evening for them and the fire department, so I thank you to all of them. Jesse, Jesse's on the, uh, call. Sir, thank you very much. Um, anyway, Fourth of July is a wonderful time, which is try to keep it safe and sane. And thank you all very much for everything, and we'll see you next time. Thank you for making it all the way through the meeting. All right, we stand adjourned.